Yeah, it was nice to see.
I'm glad we did the Main Street sidewalk, who we did.
Oh, I know.
In 300th.
Yeah, I remember.
You did?
I think better. Were you having, when we had to cook? And they were, you know, we were doing the best we could, cooking them on the market when they're fresh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, they were, they were.
Glad to hear.
Yeah. And now we have a fishmonger at the market.
Oh.
So you can get scallops and bring scallops.
Always happy to ask the person else.
But if you get on her website, she, her husband has his crew on a fishing boat for two weeks out, and two weeks in. So he goes out and.
No, we put people here, write your name on a calendar. That's nice.
Yeah, we gotta get the drag. Her, her market stand says, streets. So people just kinda walk by, meanwhile, those coolers. And they're delicious.
So is your mother-in-law?
She, I suggested she adjust branding.
In Indiana.
Sinage.
Sinage. So this is Memorial Day, I want everybody to go out looking for a taste.
It's like a day and a half, but we stay.
Jeff, can we talk with John to see if he can hear us all right before we get started, or? John, can you hear us all? He's muted.
I can hear you.
Great. Any feedback, or any unnecessary feedback?
Not on this end.
Good. Thank you.
It's been brought to my attention, we're at 7:02. So. For those of us attending remotely, can you please introduce yourselves?
John Stevens of the Select Board.
All right, and let the record know that Charlie Morris, Lydia Bright, Julie Goodrich, and Dave Maxwell are in attendance this evening. Would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
How are you?
Happy as can be.
Good.
Sir, any need to adjust the agenda this evening, Mr. Manager?
Uh, no, no need for a adjustment.
First item on the agenda is public participation schedule. We have DuBois and King, who is going to make a presentation on the Northfield Town Forest Access Feasibility Study.
I'm not sure how you share the screen on here.
Watch it.
No, I'm not sure how you share the screen on. If you go back to, back to the other, down at the bottom.
There's a new agenda.
Okay.
I think they should be seeing it. John, are you seeing that now?
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. All right. We're gonna be cutting, I'll just skip around through some pages.
Thank you.
Good evening, that was the Select Board and Town in Northfield. I'm Emily Lewis with DuBois and King, and I'm pleased to be here to present the final results from the Northfield Forest Access Study. The last time we were here, back in the fall, my colleague Dayton Kreitz presented three alternatives that we had worked with, with our, with the committee. And we'll just run through those very briefly before we move on. The one shown right now was for parallel parking along Prospect Street. And Jeff, if you can skip forward, I think three pages.
Do you have, sorry.
Page now? Or would you go to page?
It's not.
Well, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's not.
I think you may just have to go up and use the.
Okay, I thought it was side to side. Okay.
Yeah.
That's perfect. Thank you.
What page are we on?
Um, sorry, page 28. I scroll down another two pages, Jeff?
Uh, it's not showing pages.
Sorry. There you go.
Okay, great, thanks.
So we have two alternatives for access on Byham Hill Road. And this was one option for a turnaround. And then go down two pages, Jeff? This was the second, uh, second option for, for a turnaround and parallel parking. And then go down two more. And this was the third alternative, which was expanded parking at the Shaw Outdoor Center and the Green Mountain Family Practice. One more. There you go. So that was what you saw when we were here in, I believe, was in November. Next page, Jeff, or two pages down. So after that, we received a lot of feedback from the Select Board and members of the community, and then put together a survey that we put out to the public to get input. And those, those surveys really provided a lot of really valuable feedback. Uh, for the Prospect Street alternative, many of the responses were concerned about impact to homeowners. There were also responses that were close because they felt it was not, did not provide enough access, close enough to trailheads. So we did, so that, those reasons determined not to move forward with that alternative. The next one on this sheet is the, on this page is the Shaw Center Parking Improvement. You can see that was overwhelmingly favored by the community to expand access. And next page. And then the two Byham Hill alternatives. These also had a lot of concerns from the community regarding safety. However, there were some positive responses, given that this is the closest access to be able to get to the, these, those parts of the town forest. So next page. So looking at all, all the different factors, such as cost, construction requirements, property easements, support of the public, put together an alternatives matrix that looked at all of, all of these issues together and kind of helped rank, rank up to determine which would be the most feasible to move forward with. And as you can see, that one was the Shaw Center. Next page. So after having conversations with folks from Norwich University, they got together with, with Jeff and had some conversations. And we revised the alternative a little bit to eliminate additional parking down at Green Mountain Family Practice, increase some up towards the Shaw Center. Add and propose a trail that's gonna link to where the sidewalk ends near the Green Mountain Family Practice and take all the way up to the Shaw Center. After additional discussions with the university, there were some modifications to this plan to change the parking configuration right in front of the center, and that'll be shown at the end of the report. The cost estimate that we determined was based on this proposed design. Now, can you scroll down to our recommendations page, Jeff? All right, so with all of that, we, we determined five recommendations that we are making in this report. The first one we heard a lot was to really promote downtown as an existing access. There's a lot of parking already, so utilize that along with signage and maps, perhaps installing kiosks, town forest signs, to help direct people how to get from downtown up into the forest. The second recommendation is one we just, we had just discussed briefly, pursuing that Shaw Center expansion with a partnership with Norwich University. And that would include developing a memorandum of understanding between the town and the university. And. And there are several, there are several items that would need to be flushed out with that, such as environmental permitting, um, and determining cost, cost share and that sort of thing. Next page. The recommendation is using a seasonal, testing on a seasonal neighborhood parking access. So all of the, the streets in Northfield that surround the forest do have, do allow parking, parallel parking along those streets, but it's pretty, it's pretty unclear where that's allowed, if it's allowed. So potential idea is installing temporary signs on a seasonal basis to show people where, where they can park, and then determine it, and then if that is positive or negative, then can determine if there should be next steps with that. Um, we did include the Byham Hill Road turnaround as a recommendation for down the road. This is the most equitable access into the forest, and providing a turnaround would help alleviate the problems of people driving up there and then turning around in private driveways, so creating a more public turnaround there. And that could also be done on a, restricted to seasonal access or to specific groups, such as handicapped and families. So that would, if that were to move forward down the road, there would need to be additional study and development to determine the feasibility of that. And then the final recommendation, same that we heard in the last, the last time we presented to the Select Board, and that is promoting walk and bike access at the other forest access points. The more they're able to disperse access into the forest, the less, uh, the less burden there's gonna be on any one particular area. And Jeff, you can scroll down to the very last page. One more. So this page outlines the cost estimate for what it would take to create that expanded access at the Shaw Center. Uh, and this, this image here shows the revised version after the follow-up discussion with Norwich University for increasing parking right in front of the building. And that wraps up the, the final report, and I'm quite happy you still have any questions.
Is your name Avery?
Emily.
Emily, thank you.
Sorry, the mask does make it a little hard.
And Ashley Andrews is here from CVRPC as well. I can answer.
Hello, I'm here.
I can answer, actually.
So I'm also here to answer any questions you might have as well.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. I'll open the questions up with John. Go ahead, John.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Charlie?
Uh, where are we gonna go from here, from this? What's our next step? Do we make a decision tonight on, uh, how to proceed?
Yeah, I don't know that, um, folks are looking for an actual decision tonight. I think what would be best for the board to think about that, and we can see if there's additional comments that come in, and, and then, um, um, come back at some point and decide, you know, if you embrace the study, and then to think about next steps. Unfortunately, you know, with the VORAC grant, I think there was some of those opportunities will come forth with that funding. And as you know, there'll be an implementation group for the VORAC, and those folks can work on this and work with the board to decide which to implement.
Well, the last time, the reason I asked is the last time we had discussed, we had a lot of community input. I don't think the community knows about this, because apparently the agenda was silent on this as part of the agenda. Well, it wasn't silent, it was added on Monday, and it was, and it was sent out to the community on Front Porch Forum. Ah. And also, so it wasn't totally silent. We didn't get it until tonight. The Select Board didn't, yeah.
Well, the board got an email.
Got an email. So I agree with that, Charlie, that observation. I think the community needs a little more notice on this. And from this presentation tonight, I don't think, and Lydia may speak up to it, I don't think we're in a position to, to make a decision to go ahead. Well, it's a nice report, Emily, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this is a sign that we're investing in Northfield and utilizing all our resources, so this is great.
Um, I'd just like to say thank you to CVRPC and Emily and Dayton at DuBois and King. This was, um, you know, a really lively community process, and I think that they did a great job of capturing the spectrum of voices in the community, really listening the conversations. Some of them were heated, and I was really impressed with our entire community for speaking honestly and openly with each other, and mostly respectfully, even as they were very charged up. And I think that in the end, that means that we've got something really useful here. And like Jeff said, with the VORAC funds, there will be opportunities to look at which parts of this we want to implement. So I hope we can come back to it and have a deeper conversation about which parts we're all excited about. Jeff, I think, and CVRPC had a webpage going that kept this document. Can we make sure that it's easy to find on our website or on CVRPC, wherever it's gonna be posted? But now that it's finalized, that'll give the community more time to look over it and offer us feedback. And of course, they can send us emails, we're happy to hear from people.
There is a webpage specifically of the town forest, and there's a link to the Central Regional Planet Commission's.
Yeah.
Study. I checked today, it's still the draft one, not the most recent one.
That's.
But people can click on that and get the report.
Yeah. Now that it's finished, would it make sense to host it on the town website somewhere?
We could do a direct link, if that's what.
Yeah, and also too, I think what we can do is put like some kind of an announcement, and as you've seen, the announcements come up first when you first see the website. So for a while, we can have an announcement of, of the grant plus the report, and then a link to it.
That'd be great.
So yes, thank you for all your work on this. Yeah, that was my only question, is it available for the public to review? Which is important. Thank you.
So thanks again for the multiple presentations and for getting all the information to the Select Board. I think this is the beginning of the decision-making process now. And obviously, we'll let the community voice. Their concerns or support of this final document, and thanks again.
You're welcome.
Can I just say, all right, and, but, um, I wanted to let you guys know that CVRPC, we're not done with this project. We'll be having to help you moving forward with anything you guys decide on.
Thank you, Ashley. We appreciate your help in this.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there a chat or a question? I just see the little bubbles up.
Okay, there could be. Why don't you check it out? I don't know if you pull your thing out.
Oh, yes, I suppose that would be a good. I would like to take that with me. Stop sharing. There we go.
Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you all very much. Yeah, say thank you to Dayton, too, please.
Yeah, so Russ Barrett asked about closed caption availability. Something we've talked about in the, in the past, we've, we've looked into that, but we'll try to get that available. I think that's the.
So Russ, did you hear that, that we're in the process of upgrading our presentation format? So hopefully in the future, we'll have that.
What did it study?
The change in the, um.
Agenda.
Yeah, agenda change.
Well, I guess it came with the manager's report.
It did. All right. So I guess to leave it for now for this, um, obviously, this would be brought back onto the agenda for some decision-making processes.
Correct.
Uh, in the future.
Yep, and we can get no, notices out to folks in the neighborhoods.
All right, next item on the agenda, liquor control commission approval of license. Move approval of the liquor license for Good Measure, Brother, Pub and Brewery.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Manager, have anything to add?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll skip. No, I haven't had any concerns.
This is, um, this is for the, them taking over the Cornerstone Pub, correct?
Correct.
And, um.
This looks different.
Well, that was gonna be my, I, I have two observations. This looks like a different permit than usual. Is this because it's an initial one?
Yeah, and third class, I think those are different, maybe, I don't know. But I think also too, the, the state's just changed format, but I can check into that.
And then, it does say third class, but it does, has nothing checked off as retail or rent, restaurant or anything, and I was just wondering about that. And then everything else seemed to be in order.
There used to be a question about whether or not they'd had any. I forget what the question was, but.
Yeah, law enforcement violations.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's under all, against third, uh, second page. Yeah, this is definitely the new format then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Revised 2019. Okay. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the liquor license for Good Measure Incorporated, Good Measure Pub and Brewery, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Will the board kindly accept a multiple, uh, motion to approve the minutes of May 10th, May 11th, May 12th, and May 16th as presented?
Second half?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Yes. Please.
Yes.
Uh, May 10th minutes.
Okay, let me grab those. Yes.
Under Select Board, which is page three. Main Street Bridge Replacement Project. So where it says Acting Chair Goodrich said she asked Gary LaRoche earlier this year if the expense for private companies to relocate their utility lines would be considered, et cetera. Um, I'd like to refer back to the actual minutes from January 25th, 'cause I didn't specifically ask that, I asked if the cost of utility relocation was included in the total cost. And he said it was. So with all due respect to Gary, I wanna make sure that's probably documented.
So we're gonna take that verbatim out of the January.
25th.
25th minutes. Good with that, Ken?
Thank you.
Further discussion? 26th January?
25th.
25th January.
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
On page three, nine B, my name is spelled wrong.
Oh dear.
Very good.
Doesn't that happen?
Duly noted. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of May 10th, 11th, 12th, and 16th, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Staining? Okay, five, zero, zero. Even though I wasn't in attendance, I'm allowed to vote. I would like, I did. All right. Next item on the agenda, approval of bills. Move approval of warrant 2222 for a total of $101,640.26.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, John?
Well, I see that the 2014 Explorer needed a little work, and I'm just curious with the trade-in for the new 2022, whether it has to be an operating condition to trade it in.
No, per the agreement, it's, it's basically as is. Um, they've, um, we're not getting very much at all, so. Um, but again, they're still trying to utilize the vehicle because it's still a little bit unclear as to when the new vehicle will arrive.
Okay, just curious.
Sure.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, John, Charlie. I'm good. Lydia? And I'm good, too. Further discussion on warrant 2222. Hearing none. All those in favor of warrant 2222 in the amount of $101,640.26, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staining? Five, zero, zero. Move approval of warrant 2222A for a total of $10,235.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. John, any questions?
No, I haven't got any, thank you.
I'm good. Charlie?
Good.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving warrant 2222A in the amount of $10,235, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staining? Five, zero, zero. Move approval. Move approval of warrant 2222B for a total of $31,471.85.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments, questions, concerns, John?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
I'm good. Charlie?
I'm set.
I am good. Further discussion on 2222B warrant. Hearing none. All those in favor of said warrant in the amount of $31,471.85, say aye.
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 Opposed, standing, five, zero, zero.
Move approval of the bi-weekly payroll through 15 May for a total of $105,525.75.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. John?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Charlie?
I'm fine.
Lydia?
I just want to say I'm hopeful, or at least over time is gonna be within budget.
Yep.
Photo finish. Further discussion on bi-weekly payroll. Hearing none. All those in favor of bi-weekly payroll through May 15, 2022, in the amount of $105,525.75, say aye.
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 Opposed, standing, five, zero, zero. Next item on the agenda, under Select Board, Mr. Manager.
Okay, we're at that time of year, excuse me, where the Northfield Observances Group starts planning for Labor Day, or they've been planning for Labor Day, but now they're making their official request with the Select Board, as they always do. As you can see, there's a number of requests from that group. One is to request a block off the Common over Labor Day. Second, a request to block off Water Street for the car show. Third, request for Labor Day parade, parking ban. Fourth, request for Labor Day coin drop. Again, these are all items that have occurred in the past.
I'd look for a motion. Motion to approve the Northfield Observances' request for, on the letter of 10 May.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? John?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Charlie?
Do we have a policy on this, what do they call it, coin drop?
Um, we do not. I mean, we basically, you know, look to the police chief to give his opinion as to whether it's safe or not. I know there's been a couple of groups that asked to put coin drops right at the entrance to Norwich during graduation, and he pulled back from that one, but yeah, no-
That's, that was my point, is that we do have coin drops in Northfield, and there are folks that want to have them, but they get denied.
Yeah.
Because it is a traffic safety issue.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion.
Yes. Lydia, do you have any? No. Yeah, I'm not in favor of coin drops. We all know that. I've mentioned that before, but this one is really early in the morning, so it's fine. I do have a question. Who is responsible for marking the street? So number four, for the safety of place, no parking ban imposed?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, the highway department-
Oh, they put up signs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're like at three o'clock in the morning, the signs are up. I usually hear them now.
That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion.
Forty-fifth Annual Norton, Northfield, forty-five. It's just-
Okay, cool. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, standing, five, zero, zero.
The board came together, just like the theme is.
Nice observation for the Northfield Observances. Next item on the agenda is appointment of VORAC grant implementation committee members. Mr. Manager?
Okay, thank you. As was reported in a previous meeting, the town is fortunate enough to get what's called a VORAC grant. It's a Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative Grant in the amount of $121,000. And that grant is, consists of a number of components related to recreation. Some of those are trail restoration efforts, plus identifying invasive species, and recreation equipment, and other things that potentially will help pay for some of the things in the access study. So, again, very exciting, great opportunity, fairly involved. So our general feeling is that it'd be great to have an implementation committee to do that, do that effort. And since it's such a sizable effort, we felt it appropriate to have the committee approved by the board. We've gone ahead and advertised for community members to serve on that committee. In addition, representatives from Conservation Commission and Lydia were involved, and did get volunteers from those existing groups to participate. So we're fortunate that we have, let's see, it looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine folks willing to participate in that. And so at this point, a little, little top-heavy in terms of a group, but I think it's probably for this type of effort, it's important to have that many number of folks, because it's gonna be taking place over time, you know, folks drop out. So, based on the information we've received, again, the one set was recommended by folks that have worked on the VORAC grant, recommend that the group appoint those folks, again, Russ Barrett, Kimberly Cadwell, Nancy Peck, Colin O'Neill, Lydia Petty, and Deborah Zoraro, and as the manager, I will participate where I can. I've already been putting some effort into that. In addition, there are letters from Melody Courier, who's a fairly new person to the town, Lucas Herring, who's also, I think, fairly new to the town, and Erin Vieira. So again, it seems appropriate from my perspective that the Select Board appoint all those persons to the committee.
Move approval.
No, second. So moved and seconded. Further discussion, Charlie?
Does the, does, did Deb have a chance to review this original committee? Did they review the new applications?
Yeah, I've sent those along to Deb. Yep.
And they approved it, right?
Well, Deb was, Deb thought it was, yeah, Deb thought it was great.
So they've endorsed these?
Yeah, Deb, yep, yep.
Thank you.
John, you have any questions?
Well, I'm curious as to, I didn't hear what Jeff said clearly. I guess he said there were going to be seven people on the committee, and these others who expressed interest were not selected to be part of that seven. Is that right?
No, so I think, what did they say, total of eight or?
Nine.
Nine. Yeah, so there was a set, um, initial set group of folks that Deb Zoraro and others that are involved in the VORAC committee recommended, based on their experience and based on their participation in other grants and other commissions. And in addition, we advertised, and three folks separate from that other process, three folks from the community submitted letters of interest. And we asked them to provide a little background about themselves. So again, there's the, the initial group, and then the three additional from the community. And from my perspective, I'm recommending that the board appoint all those folks that have expressed an interest to participate.
Okay. Now I understand.
Yeah. I guess I didn't speak up. Sorry.
You're all set, right, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
Lydia?
Oh, I'm excited when we get a few interested volunteers in the community. Wonderful to have, draw some more people in. I'm curious what the etiquette is. If we're appointing everybody all at once, it seems like I wouldn't appoint myself. So do I just abstain? Is that what?
Do you have any financial incentive in this?
No, but-
Then you can appoint yourself.
But it's still just a little weird.
You can accept. Lydia can do whatever she wants.
That's right.
Further discussion. Hearing none. The motion is that we appoint the following to the VORAC steering committee. Russ Barrett, Kimberly Cogwell, Nancy Peck, Colin O'Neill, Lydia Petty, Deb Zoraro, Jeff Schultz is the manager, Melody Courier, Lucas Herring, and Erin Vieira. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you very much, all of you, for doing that. Standing?
I'm standing.
Very good. Four, zero, one. Got that, Ken? Next item on the agenda, Central Street Sidewalk Project bid results. Mr. Manager?
Okay, as we've reported in the past, we've been working with the Highway Subcommittee to, on a project on Central Street, to remove some existing, or remove the existing asphalt sidewalk along kind of the northeasterly side. And then down at the very bottom, from Wall Street back up to the hairdresser, the plan is to install about 488 feet of new concrete sidewalk with curving. Again, the philosophy was there to steep section and also help with drainage. So we envision a contractor doing all of the work on the new concrete and the curving and crosswalk. So we did go ahead and send out bids to folks for that project, and we're fortunate, we did get one, two, three, four, five bids, quite a range. First was a bid from Avery Excavation, $92,446. Capital Earth Moving, $98,800. Jay Merrill Construction, $221,100. Nut Brown's Construction, $78,500. And Poolin Landscaping at $97,495. As you can see, Mr. Nut Brown is low bid. He, as you recall, he has done some work with the town. He worked on portions of the Main Street sidewalk, plus he did a number of sidewalks in the downtown area along East Street. So based on what we know and his experience and his bid and the bid price, we at this point would recommend that the board offer or award the bid to Nut Brown Construction.
He's not the one that recently did the project on?
Oh, he was not the con, he was not the main contractor. He was one of the subs.
Okay.
Yeah, so he was not the-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that I got cleared up.
Yeah, yeah. And again, as I mentioned, on East Street, he was responsible for all that sidewalk. It came out very nice, it was well-received. He got that one done on time, and he actually kind of saved the day for the municipality on the Main Street. So yeah, he has no, absolutely no connection to the general contractor. And what's good too is, in the past, he saw the request for bids, and he, in there, we asked for a request that it be done in early July, and he said he can meet that deadline. So that will fall in nicely with our schedule to complete the whole, the whole project.
And not interfere with Labor Day.
Correct.
So I saw in some of the bids, well, we need a motion, I guess.
Well, make a motion to approve Nut Brown's contract bid for the Central Street Sidewalk Project for a total of $78,500.
Second.
So now it's time for discussion.
Questions, discussion, John?
Sorry.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Charles? I understand, understood there was gonna be some drainage and catch basins put in here. They're not, this is-
No, no. So we have the sewer depart, water sewer department doing that.
Are they doing that right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, you know, well skilled. They've done-
Got it, got it. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything. Thank you very much.
Lydia?
Oh, I just, it seems like this one is the least professional looking of the group, and has the least detail. And three of the other ones were just so close to each other.
Yeah.
But I, I'm gonna trust you because you've worked with him before, or this company before, and-
Yeah, he, yeah. He has a lot of work for Casella, and has done a lot of work with the town of St. J, St. John's Bay. I've chatted with them, and he continues to work, and they're very happy with his work.
And he comes in from Walden, huh?
Yeah. Well, he comes in, does a lot of work. I guess he does a lot of work for Casella, and he's doing another project nearby, so.
Questions, Julie, or?
No, as Lydia said, I just have to look to Jeff for the recommendation. Because, you know, we really haven't had a chance to go through these in detail.
Yeah.
Did John get a copy of these?
Yes.
So I've dealt with this gentleman on the East Street project myself. He, he sort of bailed us out on that one, too.
Correct, yeah.
And he really did an excellent job on the Main Street project that he worked on quality-wise. I had an engineer friend of mine watch it, and it was excellent. So I feel very confident in his ability. So I do have one question. On the others, it was, there was a coordination of timing with the curb set. Is this curb set included in his quote, or are we having that as an outside?
Well, it's excluded, included in the price.
It is?
Yes. Yeah, so it's just a matter of him, you know, coordinating.
Is he doing the curb set, or is, or is-
He, it looks like at this point he's going to get Granite State curbing.
Is that stated in this bill?
It's not.
It's not?
But, I mean, yeah.
Well, I want it to be understood that Granite State curbing is going to do, is gonna be a subcontractor of his, correct?
Correct, yeah.
For this.
Correct.
Okay.
But this has nothing to do with the old sidewalk?
Correct, the, the-
That's been-
Yeah, the highway departments were moving that, correct, and-
Yep. Who was responsible for, you know, on South Street, how the sidewalk, there was like a drop-off? It didn't have a, the appropriate ramp, and we had to fix it afterwards. Was that the fault of?
Not him.
Okay.
That was the general contractor.
Right, and then we had that fixed by, actually by-
Yes, I knew it got fixed, but-
Mr. Nut Brown actually fixed it.
Fixed it, okay.
Yep. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of awarding the Central Street Sidewalk Project to Nut Brown Construction, say aye.
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 Opposed, standing, five, zero, zero. Uh, next item on the agenda is under Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. As I noted in the report, the town is fortunate enough to receive a grant from the state of Vermont for improvement to Lover's Lane. It consisted of two elements. One is $120,000 for road subbase work, and another hundred and, I'm sorry, another $66,000 for the replacement of 1,850 feet of new guardrails. I have not seen the actual grant agreement, so I'm not gonna call those numbers complete, but that's what I was told, was those numbers were going to be. So that's some good news. We got that kind of funding for improvements to that road. Stony Brook Bridge is on track. As you've seen, the flashing lights are working, and folks are pleased about that. Contractor does have the bridge closed, and he anticipates reopening that in mid-June. As you may recall, the municipality did receive, there's about $25,000 grant for a consultant to come in and assist the planning commission with the update with the zoning bylaws. The consultant is Julie Beth Hines, very experienced person. She has jumped in and started working on that effort. She did note that the current regs are kind of cumbersome and do need some major- reorganization. We talked the best about how the consultant can present those regulations to the public and the select board. We've kind of, at this point, determined that the administrative changes and the structural changes were too cumbersome to actually do cross-outs. However, the important part, any changes to land use sections will be crossed out, and all of that will be clear as to what those changes are. But since, again, it's in the early stages and it's fairly complicated, I've invited Julie Beth Hines to come in at the next select board and kind of introduce herself, discuss what her plan is, and explain the process, so we can get an early into the process, and let you folks see what she's up to and how it's going to go. As you see, there were, there are a request for bids for the VORAC grant for trail restoration. Unfortunately, the town has still not received a grant agreement from the state for that. And so, we're getting a little nervous about awarding a bid to contractors when we don't have the actual grant agreement. The state has indicated, you know, that the town can proceed on some of the items, but, you know, they're proceeding at their own risk. So, we want to keep the process going. I anticipate getting a grant agreement here next week or so. Once we get that agreement, get real assurances, then, you know, then we can award some bids. Ambulance Department, as you know, they've been doing COVID testing for, I don't know how long now. It looks like that COVID testing at the ambulance facility will be ending, I think, the middle, middle of June. As you've probably read, the federal government has kind of stopped funding that, so, um, that will end. Obviously, that testing process has worked out for the town of Northfield. Not only was there a very close nearby testing facility, so folks didn't have to travel, but from a financial standpoint, the municipality did increase its revenues significantly due to that effort, and that's obviously helped the budget, so. And thanks to the crew for doing that, and, again, it worked out very well. On a last, uh, positive note, we are having some serious issues with the 214 ambulance. They are having some serious engine issues with that. Patrick Martin has been working on that for the last week and a half. You know, I applaud, he's done a great job, but he has brought in folks from outside to try to fix that. You know, unfortunately, it's looking like some serious issues, but I will, we'll keep the board updated. As you recall, that is the ambulance that is to do to be sent out for a remount, but unfortunately, we can't send it out, or they're not taking it probably for another 10 months or so, so we're going to have to figure that situation out. Truly unfortunate, but we're working on it. Funds there, I'm sorry, there are funds there, they have done some. I know they did some on Smith Hill, and, uh, folks were grateful for that, but we'll make sure that they stay on that.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Charlie? My understanding is the engine on that ambulance is best now as an anchor.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, right. Uh, and also, so the public knows, and Bravo Zulu to the ambulance group, they have been at the farmer's market twice now, passing out, uh, the last of their home test COVID kits, and they are free, and there's two types, and they've got boxes of them. So, farmer's market, I hate to do a shameless promotion, but farmer's market is from 3:00 to 6:00 on Tuesday, and the ambulance crew is there to pass those out, and I got my four today. That is all.
Question about the fountain might continue as an agenda item sometime in the future. I'm not in agreement with what I.
Can you folks, you know, choose? Um, and, you know, I explained my thoughts as to what, what's happening here and what my impressions are, and comments I have been getting about folks I think are hoping that something will be done sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah.
And so, that was my recommendation, but also too, I think it was a prompt to, to, you know, to have the board start discussions on that. I think we, the municipality and the board were very fortunate, you got some great comments, and it was a great interaction. But again, I think it was too also a prompt to not let folks, you know, not let the issue linger.
Yeah, I, I think we should try to just take some action on it at some point in the near future, whatever, in whatever way that's appropriate. I feel that we gave the public the impression that we would be soliciting input. The type of input that we've gotten so far wasn't because we reached out to the community and asked, it was, you know, the people who happened to read about it and, and I, I feel that we, it's such an important part of our community, and the one area that I do think there is agreement is how important it is to everyone. And aside from that, there's a lot of differing views, um, so I would, I would just love us to figure out a process that's going to get us the best input possible.
Could I chime in on that, Mr. Chairman?
You can.
Thank you. Uh, we've been presented from Norwich University an idea. We have been presented an offer from a, a former community member. We have not heard, we have not seen any package that is going to discuss all items. So, it would be, to Lydia's point, I think it would be favorable to come up with, what are we going to do with the fountain and how much it's going to cost? We know what Norwich has recommended and their estimated costs. We don't know unless you cross out, I think he said, a particular item, line item on that presentation that Norwich made, and that's the cost if you just wanted to rebuild a fountain, and I looked at that and said, that's not how you'd develop a cost. So, to your point, I would like to, sooner rather than later, because we've had a lot of discussion, and it's been great. I swept the bricks out there today during the farmer's market, met some people I had forgotten about. So, we know we're not going to take the bricks out, or at least I won't support taking it out the pavers, but the comment, the fountain is a mess. We need to address it, so everybody knows what the select board is, and this misinformation that we're going to do something can end, so we can act like professionals and say, this is what, this is what we can do, and this is what it's going to cost, and I think we should have that sooner rather than later, to your point, and it should be transparent. And, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up before you.
Yeah, I just, I also feel that it got into this very polarized, it's either a splash pad, or it's keeping it exactly the same, and I feel that's like a total loss of having more of a conversation, what, what? And we did some of this with a Better Places survey of what does, what is the comment for, what does it mean to people, what do they want to see happening there? Safety came up a bunch, and one of the other things I, I wanted to just, the placemaking demonstration happened on Friday, and I wasn't there for the full impact of it, but I think it went well, it'd be great if folks checked it out and they have feedback about what parts worked well or worked horribly, we want to hear back from people, but I know, I, I would like us to look more expansively at that area, because I think in a lot of communities, when you change like your primary public space, you do something more like the feasibility study, where we spend time, we have multiple community engagement, design ideas, and really take our, I mean, I want to take action, but I also think we should take our time.
Get it through.
Yeah. Uh, sorry to go on about that. Yeah, so thank you to AARP and Community Workshop and Local Motion for doing that demonstration on Friday, and Bonnie Donahue was a local volunteer that really helped. Middle school students came down and participated. I also wanted to let you all know that Northfield was invited to be part of a panel at the June 9th Downtown Conference, um, a panel of communities that did things to open up their public spaces during COVID, to try to support their community and businesses. So, I'll be attending to speak with Montpilier and Rutland. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who put in all the efforts on the kiosk. It was so exciting to see the opening farmer's market and the kiosk being celebrated, and also the new benches in Dog River Park. I think thanks to the Dog River Park Committee, the Class of 57 Rotary, and the Historical Society, if I forgot anybody, I'm sorry. But it's really exciting to see these different elements in our community that are coming from multiple groups of volunteers and town groups working together.
Thank you, buddy. Julie?
Yes, I also wanted to ask about getting the fountain estimate for the refurbishing of it and the recirculation system. And I, I also would not be in support of removing the, the pavers, for the record. Also, going back to what John mentioned about Freewayard and the water line and that being private, would we not be setting a precedent?
There's a mouse right here.
What's that?
Yellow.
Sorry, there's a mouse.
Nice.
It's about Sal is not here.
I just wouldn't want to set a precedence by doing something on private property, I mean, not that that would be great, but we would also want to do residential people who want water and can't afford to get it. So, just something to keep in mind with that.
Yep.
Yeah. Guess that's all I have?
Very good. So, I'll speak to the water line first. I think if there's going to be development in that property, that maybe part of the development plan taken in, take in consideration, um, there needs to be water lines, and that could be folded into a, the cost of that develop, develop. Fountain. So, I wanted to bring the fountain up. I have been approached with several ideas on how to go forward regarding the fountain, but the first and foremost thing I think we should do is not be forced into something that we're not ready to make a decision on. And if it means that we may have to pass on a donation that puts a, um, a deadline in, we may have to do that. So, I just want to get that out in the public. I think there needs to be a comprehensive look at the fountain itself, the surrounding area, um, and also a look at the common as a whole. I would be opposed in the removal of the bricks, and I would be opposed to the removal of the fountain, the cast iron, but I, I do think there is an opportunity for the community to give their input in one of two ways. At the August primary, we have it on it, the ballot, as an item, or we wait until town meeting and have it on the, on the ballot. Probably those are the two best ways to get a broad section, and maybe if you wait till town meeting day, you'll have a better cost estimate of the various possibilities that may go down in improving our common. But I do think we should continue the discussion. And then the other, three people have come to me and offered their services to serve on a committee and to do fundraising for the fountain. So, that's another approach we could do. So, I think that the fountain should be kept on, on the forefront, but that we should not be forced into doing, having a false timeline, because we have to do a lot of research, we have to seek input, and, um, and I, the greatest thing is that we're talking about improving our common, which I think is fantastic, and I think there could be an outstanding result from this. It may be borne by a pro, a public-private endeavor, but, um, so let's keep that on the forefront. I also wanted to thank a committee who's been working tirelessly since January in getting public participation and information out to the community, and I'm not going to name all the committee members, but Mary Shernock came to the, the select board last fall with this idea, and they've come up with this flyer that's been in everyone's utility bill that's serviced by Northfield Utilities. There's also going to be, um, displays set up around the community regarding input on a survey, and then there's going to be one, two, three, four, five events, um, starting next Tuesday at the Woods Lodge, the Falls General Store on Saturday, June 4th, the American Legion on Tuesday, June 7th, the United Church on September 11th, and the Senior Center on September 14th. And what they're seeking is the community's input on how to direct the $1.9 million that Northfield is being given regarding the ARPA funds. So, I wanted to thank Mary and her committee. I know John helped on it. I was just there at the very beginning to put the thing together, and, and I wanted to thank her for that. So, this is a great example how you get community input by volunteers doing the footwork.
Dave?
You should mention that additional meeting has been added for June 9th, Thursday, June 9th, in this room.
Okay. So, June 9th, there will be a meeting in this room, um, and I assume all this information is going to be on social media from Porch Forum, on the town's website, et cetera, so the community will know how and when to participate. I also want to thank those who put the kiosk bus stop up. I did have a question, is that the final material on the exterior of that?
No.
Where the plywood is?
Yeah.
No, there's, um, panels going there, the Historical Society helped put together, and I think they just had some delays in the company that was edging them.
And there's be some additional etching on some of the sides, but yeah, so it's, it's probably 80%, 85%.
Okay, yeah, because I had two negative comments about that, and I said I would research it, but I think it's going to be great. And I thank everyone who was involved in that. And all the new benches, I, I walked down Water Street, Dog River Park the other day, saw the new plaques on the, on the pavilion, saw the new benches, really did a great job. That's all I have. Next item on the agenda is public participation unscheduled.
I see one in the chat.
Okay. Elroy, I'm going to give you an opportunity, if you have anything to say?
Not right now.
Okay. And who would like to be recognized online?
Michelle?
Michelle would like to.
Hi, this is Michelle from, yes, I would, thank you very much. So, I'm Michelle from GNN Excavation. I put in a bid for the trail restoration project, and I'm a little confused as to, it sounds like this is on hold for some reason. You're not opening the bids this evening, can, can you speak to that? Let me know what's going on there.
Sure, yeah. Thanks, yeah. One of your workers did bring in the bids, we stamped it, put it in the folder, we have those. What we, this, I think I, I mentioned during the site visit that this is paid for, or the work will be paid for, a VORAC grant, and, um, part of that is that the state needs to provide us a grant agreement, and unfortunately, the state has been very much delayed, I think it's staffing issue, and, um, so I was very hopeful that I would get that grant agreement either last week or this week. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant agreement, and. And so after talking to state officials and others, we felt that we needed to put it on hold. So we do have your bid. It's in a, in a sealed file and, uh, I'm very hopeful we'll get that agreement, uh, uh, here shortly and be able to review those bids.
I see. So will you, um, put out some sort of, um, alert to the contractors who bid on it? So that, um, you do get around to open the bids, we'll, we'll be present and see.
Sure, yeah.
Where we stood.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Again, I repeat myself, we just didn't want to, without that grant agreement, you just didn't, weren't quite ready. But, uh, uh, again, the process is slightly on hold, but, um, it's moving forward.
Right. Okay, so I, I just want to make one comment that I, I appreciate that in today's, uh, things run way slower than they should, shipping, manufacturing, et cetera. But, you know, we, as contractors who've been on this project, there are culverts involved, which is, which are petroleum based. And when you, when you get a, um, a call for a culvert, it's like for seven days. So the price could go up substantially on all of us who've been on that while we're waiting for the state to get their act together.
Yeah, it is, it is frustrating.
Keep that in mind. It's extremely frustrating, yes.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks so much for your input.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
Further public participation unscheduled. Okay, hearing none. We will be going into executive, uh, session this evening on a personnel and legal matter. I would look for a. Make a motion to go into executive session. Been moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of going into executive session for legal and personnel, say aye.
Aye.
Say. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, we're going into executive session after a five-minute break.